Friends, we're going to go ahead and get started a little bit early, which I think is a good thing in the event that there are additional questions or substantive discussion. Those that are present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, council members Dillon, Girbaugh, McClellan, Rhodes, Tahar, CEO is absent, and Councilwoman-elect Mitchell is also present. From city staff, we have City Manager Campbell, Deputy Clerk Bloom, City Engineer Superintendent Rubel, and Attorney Smith. The rest of you who are in the audience this evening, if you'd be so kind to sign in the back to my left, I would appreciate that. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. We have one discussion item, and that's the purchase agreement of Lot 19 in the Sauk Trail Business Park.
So moved.
Moved by Girbaugh as submitted, seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Appreciate everyone's flexibility and you all agreeing to meet this evening on relatively short notice. We also appreciate the petitioner, petitioners, excuse me, and their legal counsel being here. I think it's been about a month and a half since you were here last, and there may be a few new faces at the table. Would you mind introducing yourselves, and then we'll go around and make sure you're familiar and comfortable with who will be discussing this issue tonight?
Michelle Weaver, owner of Zippy.
And Corey Weaver, owner of the building.
Maria Harsham, attorney of the law.
Scott Smith, county attorney.
Gary Robles, city engineer.
Jane Penel, city council.
Andy Turmer, city council.
Amy Willett, deputy clerk.
Brian Morrow, the mayor.
Iain Wells, city council.
David Rhodes, Pro Town.
Hi, Chris D'Mitchell. I'm a member of us.
Very good. Thank you all. Okay, please remember to speak into the microphone because we are recording tonight's meeting, and unless staff, unless Mr. Campbell has anything, I'm going to turn it over to our attorney, Scott Smith. Thank you, Scott.
Okay, you have before you two pieces of, or two documents. One is a drawing, to which I will refer off and on during the course of this discussion, and the other is a draft real estate purchase and development agreement. And I will take you through the purchase and development agreement. The agreement's similar to the Junga agreement, but the project, particularly the timing of the project, is different than the Junga agreement, so this one needed to track the changed project and changed timing. There's less acreage overall than what you were expecting, probably. There's more being paid per acre, but the overall purchase price is a little less. If you look at the drawing, you'll see what's being acquired is this area here, and the area south of that is not being acquired. Their proposal calls for their stormwater pond to be put here, and the area south of that won't be acquired. When we vacate, assuming you decide to do so, Sauk Trail Court, this will leave this property available to be acquired by Lot 20. They may be able to use it for their detention area as well, and ultimately, we would, there would be some drive aisle connecting through here, probably to Lot 20, and connecting lots 18 and 19. Let me take you through the agreement. The introductory paragraph indicates we are contracting with Corey and Michelle Weaver. They will form a limited liability company later, and this allows for that formation. If you look at recital A, you will see that what we're proposing is 2.83 acres, and the exact legal descriptions and so forth have yet to be completed. We're working with a surveyor on that. If you go to paragraph one, or section one, the purchase price is $500,000. They will make a $10,000 deposit, and toward the end of that paragraph, just like in the Junga agreement, we're not making any representations or warranties regarding the condition of the property. If you look at sections two, three, and four, they have the same title, survey, and inspection commitment arrangements as were in the Junga agreement. Sections five and six deal with this. It's obviously going to be a car wash, as we've discussed. It's tied generally to the presentation you saw earlier regarding how the site's going to look and be laid out and so forth, so just like in the Junga agreement, where with the hotel, we made reference to the presentation they made, the same thing will be done here. Zoning approval provisions, like in the Junga agreement. Section seven, there is, if you look at the subsection A2 on page four, you'll see that there are signage and landscaping details provided for. Now, in the Junga agreement and earlier drafts of this agreement, we thought of doing this as a PUD arrangement, but both parties said they would prefer not having a PUD. On the other hand, we wanted to make sure that, like in a PUD, there was common signage, common landscaping, and it appeared to be part of a unified development. So we found a way to do that contractually, and last week at a meeting with representatives of the Junga group here, we agreed to a process where the Weavers will come up with some landscaping, signage, pavement marking, and other concepts. We'll present that to them. Junga will have a few days to react against it, or react to it. Assuming there's no dispute as to what those would be like, what is proposed will govern the project, not only the Zippies project, but also the Junga project. If there's a difference of opinion, the planning commission's decision will determine what those signage and other requirements are going to be. Both parties felt comfortable deferring to the planning commission. The difficulty is that outside of a PUD kind of arrangement, we can't compel the two parties to have similar kinds of signage and landscaping and otherwise, so we wanted to contractually obligate them to do that. Paragraphs eight through 10, or sections eight through 10 are likened in Junga agreement. Section 11, especially subsection C, I want to bring your attention to. There will be a private road installed here, a private street, and that's this shaded Our current arrangement with the Junga group calls for Junga to acquire this property. That arrangement's going to be amended. Zippies will acquire this property. Zippies will design, build, and maintain this private street segment. And again, the Junga group is okay with all of that. We have simultaneously proposed an addendum to the Junga group that addresses the signage and landscaping requirements and this private road requirement. Junga will have a reciprocal easement across this road, be able to use it. If Zippies or a subsequent owner of the property fails to maintain it, the Junga group or owners and occupants of that property would be able to step in and maintain it as needed. And so they feel pretty comfortable with the arrangement, and it takes a cost off their plates. If there are any questions, the remainder of the agreements, like the Junga agreement, it's basically the boilerplate at the end.
Before I open it up to questions, Scott, unless you have anything else. I'm going to invite Mr. Weaver's wife or legal counsel. Do you care to make any comment at this time before I open it up for questions?
I don't have any. Well, that's a good overview of the infrastructure as well as the infrastructure of the lot.
Excellent. All right, well, we will start to my left. Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes, will you make sure that Councilwoman McClellan has the microphone? Do you have any questions for the applicant, legal counsel, or staff?
So how does the future, I mean, say, they leave and Junga leaves, and there's two new property owners there? Is the document you're signing here have precedent, I guess, over how that easement, and how they are going to get along, and who's going to maintain it, and all that kind of stuff?
Right. There will be an eas, we will reserve an easement in the deed to the Weavers, and then convey that easement when we convey the property to Junga. And so there will be recorded documents that indicate what that arrangement is.
I just was curious as to how that would work in the future, if they all...
Right. Now, there'll be recorded easements that show all of those obligations going back.
Okay. And then, all of the closing costs, the survey costs, all of that is exactly the same as the Junga agreement? Okay. So the city's taking on a lot of those costs?
Well, we're paying for the survey for Junga anyway, and this is, really, the surveys are part and parcel of the same, because we're borrowing some from various lots going back and forth, so we need to survey both of them at the same time.
Okay. So would it be an additional cost to what we're already paying for the Junga property?
Maybe slightly additional, because we're splitting the lots a little different, and I've got to get a separate survey description of this piece of property and a couple of other things, but not significantly.
Okay. And then, finally, for me, so this front piece is not going to be part of their property, so this front piece is just going to be this little weird wedge out of Lot 19?
You mean the piece, this piece down here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That...
Eventually, we're going to, the plan is to vacate all of this. So this street won't be here, and so that'll make a fairly sizable piece that could be conveyed to the owner of Lot 20.
So then, there would be no court or no street there? Is that what we're assuming?
Right.
Okay. So how would they access the property then?
There'll be a driveway across here at some point.
And will that be city property then, on that driveway? Or that would be private property?
Right.
Okay. I think that's it for me.
Can I jump in? And I'd like sort of a show of hands, because I don't know that we've got consensus on this. I hope that there's consensus on it, but I don't know that it's been specifically asked. We've mentioned now on numerous occasions about abandoning what's identified on this one memo as Sauk Trail Court, that that's the plan as we look to the future. Is everyone in agreement with that?
I'm in agreement with that. It potentially could develop into another separate lot.
Okay.
And I don't know how much acreage is there.
Let me just pull up the table real quick. Mr. Har, you okay with that? Ms. Dillon?
I think I can concur with what, excuse me. I just want to make sure that, because now we're once again seeing things very piecemeal of like how it's going to all lay out together, the Junga, the Weaver, without the road, and what that piece is going to be like. If it's a usable parcel, then I have no objection to it, but if it's going to become a dead land...
Okay. Ms. Mitchell, do you have any comment on that? I know this is sort of new to you.
No, no, it's good. Heidi echoed my thoughts. I guess, my question was...
Well, I just want to stick on this issue of...
Of the Sauk Trail?
Yeah, of course.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yeah, I'm fine with removing that from the serious responsibility.
Okay, Ms. McClellan?
Yeah, I have to allow Jan to ask that, as long as it's going to be a sellable, usable piece of property, that's fine, and it's going to be just a little dead spot.
Okay. I think my position, probably yours, that of Councilwoman McClellan, Dillon, and Mr. Girbaugh as well, sounds to me there's consensus. So I ended it with you, in terms of questions. Mr. Rhodes, questions for legal counsel staff or the applicant?
Similar to Heidi's question, I was concerned about the potential difficulties in the future with the maintenance of this little section of roadway, considering the possibility of different owners. And will the easement documents establish some maintenance criteria, some level of maintenance that's required?
Well, if you look at the draft agreement here, it requires that the buyer, without cost, to the other owners of the lots, plow the snow, remove ice and snow from, sweep and remove debris from, and otherwise maintain and repair the private street, including pavement markings and signage in a condition that's reasonably safe, meets legal requirements, and is at least consistent with the highest quality and highest appearance of the lands and improvements at any time within those lots. So it's a pretty specific...
You come across that in my review here.
So that's why, I understand that, but what I wanted to do was read it exactly rather than try to paraphrase it.
Okay. And then, my only other point was something that has been broached earlier also, and that is the viability of this strip of land to the south of the new Lot 19, because if somebody comes along and does 20, which we hope, we can't require them to buy what's left behind Lot 19.
Well, we, I don't want to end up with a vacant chunk of land in there that nobody's legally responsible for. We could ask Tony about that, probably.
So I don't know if you, yeah, I mean, obviously, the discussions that we've had early on has been the idea that we would simply extend those property lines for those three lots right to the south to incorporate the portion directly south of, for the current road right of way. One of the ideas, so essentially, Lot 18 for the Junga group, you know, that would go south a little bit to capture that part of the street right of way. And then, initially, we were going to incorporate, we were proposing to incorporate the southern portion of, the southern portion of Lot 19 with that correctly south adjacent road right of way, and then, of course, Lot 20 to do the same. And so, one of the discussions we had was to potentially incorporate that in, and we would redraw the line and incorporate it into Lot 20 is one of the ideas or thoughts that we talked about. So I don't know, Mayor, if it's okay to ask Tony?
Yeah, Tony, do you have any comment on that?
You know, honestly, no. It's hard to predict who or what will end up with interest in Lot 20, what their use will require. That additional kind of dongling to the rear could come in handy for stormwater retention, or it could be additional parking required with the restaurant, something to that effect. So I think when we were looking at how we would divide up these three parcels that, you know, at least right now, to attach it to Lot 20, and then address that when, you know, when the time is appropriate with the interest of parking in Lot 20.
So it's not inconceivable that attaching that parcel to Lot 20, that could be managed?
No, not at all.
Could be. Somebody might not want that little piece, and then what do we do with it?
Right.
But the little city has to avoid all the time. So I don't know if there's some way to address that, if it's not desired by future purchasers? Do we just deed it over and make it part of Lot 19, even though you don't need it? So we don't have any back of weeds growing up behind the facility?
Very good. Ms. Mitchell?
My questions were very similar to Heidi's, and I wanted to double-check with our attorney whose authority can ensure that this road is going to be maintained. I know, I know it's been a bit of discussion already, but just saying, well, you know, it'll be passed down to somebody in the future if Zippies moves on.
Well, the respective property owners will both have rights to ensure that that gets done, and will also have the ability to do it themselves. If Zippy successor in title doesn't do it, they'll be able to do it themselves. They'll be able to go to court and force somebody to...
I see.
To do, that's what the easements and reciprocal easements, they're all the time done, for shopping centers, for all kinds of things.
That was my follow-up. Is this a common?
Yeah.
And has there, has there been much conflict over things like this, or traditionally it's been a pretty safe?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Good. Ms. Dillon?
I guess I wanted to start with, so now, this private road, this is going to be the only curb cut to this entire complex? Is that what we're saying right now? Or is there going to be other access points onto Michigan Avenue?
It's possible Lot 20 would have an additional curb cut, but that hasn't been determined yet. It depends on what kind of use is put there, and whether it can meet M.D. requirements and so forth. It's not entirely in our hands.
Okay. Because I know at one point, we had discussed whether or not there'd be left-hand turn lane, left, and I know Zippies had talked about having a rear exit, and so I just wanted to see where we were at in that.
Well, they'll still have a rear exit, because they'll be able to go up here and exit down this way through...
Through the Junga property.
Right.
Eventually, after that land is developed.
Right, that's right.
So I guess I just want clarification, because I'm a little confused as to your road here. Where does this road actually, what is it doing?
It actually comes up about this far.
Okay. Now, this one continues on, correct? Is that what I'm saying?
Well, Junga, Junga will build the rest of that.
Right.
Okay, they only need this part of it to get in and out of Zippies.
Okay. And then, had you, you mentioned earlier about having another movement of weed in the stormy?
Right. There are detention ponds down here, and we're envisioning that a future owner here will put an access drive across this line.
So is that cutting through the land that they don't want? Is that...
That's correct.
Okay, so then, that would actually have to make that part of 20.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
But then, it leaves us with that whole big dead circle area in the back that...
Well, except that, that will be vacated, and they, as Tony indicated, they may put their detention pond there, they may put additional parking there, and they may do other kinds of things, again, depending on what use we end up with.
Right, but then we also have the dead space behind the Junga property that would have been a road.
Well, Junga's talked about, they need to move their buildings a little bit, and they're going to need to reconfigure their parking a little bit when they do that. They need to move their buildings 24 feet...
So is he buying more land?
...to accommodate the T.E. line.
Is he planning to buy more land if he has to move his buildings?
Well, the idea, if I may, excuse me, the idea is, we've talked about from the beginning,
again, was to, and no additional cost for any three of the lots, was initial proposal to, because that road right of way to the south is really not conducive to build on as is. And so, but a trade-off in that he's actually reducing the amount of acreages we'd be purchasing, because Zippies folks are purchasing that quarter acre, whatever it is, for the entrance off of Michigan Ave.
And the other thing is that by vacating this street, we don't need to put it in.
Right.
Which is a huge saving, huge cost savings for us, and we don't need to plow it and maintain it and so forth. So by vacating it and then having them internally handle the traffic circulation, we eliminate a significant cost for the city.
Okay. I'll go with that for now. That's it for me for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dillon.
So, thank you. Most of my questions have already been asked and answered, but one more about the easement. So is there any provision in or any way to make a provision, should the purchaser of Lot 20 also need to use the same entrance? How might that be handled?
It's written, it's written to accommodate Lot 20 as well.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Girbaugh?
So when you mentioned that it's accommodate Lot 20, then that road would be extended all the way to the back and then cut across?
Yeah, we would envision that those buying Lot 20 would, would put a road through this way, and Mr. Jung has already indicated he will take this, and instead of curving it here like it shows, he will square it off so that it can, it will line up and come straight across here.
Okay. At one time, we talked about shared pension. I thought shared or, potentially having shared retention or detention, has that, now each property will have their own?
Apparently, you and I were the only ones that thought that was a good idea. Because every time I mention that, our city planning staff, our city engineers, the property owners, they've all kind of said, "That's not a good idea."
And then, I guess, my concern is looking at where the detention's on, and again, this is where I kept bringing this back up again. On the Zippy property, if we abandon that property, that potentially gives them the ability to develop and add another building onto it without the city getting any benefit from all of that property. So I'm thinking...
No, Zippies won't own this. Zippies is buying only to here.
But if I understood Mr. Campbell correctly, we were going to abandon all our rights to that property without making some little small square, so that that potentially would make that a large lot that would be developed.
It, it will become part of Lot 20?
So we're going to keep it as part of Lot 20 and make it L, not make it a straight?
Correct. What I said was, the initial discussions were that potentially to just slide the property lines to the south, just like you'd mentioned, but because of the results of these discussions, and that Zippies do not, they don't want any further south than that, that it would be, as Mr. Smith just said, it would be an L-shaped for 20.
Yeah, and that's where I was looking at, that potentially you could have created two lots out of 20, and that back part into...
And we may end up doing that. We may end up parceling it out that way. I'm not...
Okay. So then, that's why I want to make sure that we could potentially do that, but also that we have a road that comes all the way down straight with the easement potential that would come off of 12 or from the shopping center.
Right.
Correct.
Thank you.
We're running a little short on time, folks, and is there any other questions for legal counsel, for the applicant, or for staff? Okay, well, what I'm looking for, please.
So the Junga property will also have an exit on industrial. Is that correct? Is that where this whole traffic flow?
Yes.
So are we looking now at everyone coming in off of Michigan, exiting onto industrial? Or is that the flow, or is that just an alternate exit?
It would be an alternate, alternate route.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, what I'm looking for tonight is if there is consensus to move forward with this mandated sales agreement, or whether counsel would prefer to go in a different direction, or to be perhaps more thoughtful and take some time to assess this further. I started with you in the line of questioning, Councilwoman McClellan. What are your thoughts?
Kind of right now, I'd say, I'd be, I'd go forward, I would probably like more, I would be more free to digest it, but...
You're tentative, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
I just, I'm concerned about the Lot 20. I mean, I wonder if there's going to be two parcels then, or whether we're going to make that one big L. I just, I'm concerned of making that something that's sellable and not, where this company leaves that extra man off, and that cost off of that future offer. So I guess I'm just a little bit concerned about that.
Do you want to make a quick comment, please?
Just quickly, you know, one of the very early offers that we had had for Lot 20 was the proposal to divide Lot 20. So, again, there's a lot of unknowns about what happens to Lot 20. It could go in its entirety, or it could actually be split again, depending on the type of future use.
But of course, Ms. McClellan, if questions come up between now, and if there's, if the majority feels that they want to move forward with this, and it's on the next council agenda, feel free to reach out to staff to pose any questions, thoughts, concerns you may have. Mayor Pro Tem Rhodes?
I'm supporting this on the, the, the...
Okay. Ms. Mitchell?
I also support it in forward.
Okay. Ms. Dillon?
I, I'll support, I don't have an issue with the Zippy property. My issue comes with a lot of the what-ifs with the Junga property now, and what happens if he does not develop, and then you don't have a rear exit? I mean, does that impact your business?
It doesn't, we only need a full front.
You just need the full front one, even if it's, if it's not a traffic signal, if it's not designated as two-way, meaning left turn, you're okay with it? left turn, you're okay with that?
As long as it's a full curve.
Thank you.
Ms. Hart?
I'm okay with moving forward.
Very good. Ms. Yerba?
Yeah, I am too. I just, we'll need a couple more weeks to digest all of this, too, and so I would actually like to see a little more potential of what the ideas are for Lot 20, for that proposal. So when we talk about it at the council meeting, that we have that information.
Well, let me preface by saying, and I articulated these sentiments when the petitioners were last in front of us. I'm a fan of Zippies' car wash. I'm a proud customer of Zippies' car wash. For this issue, I would always bet a bit of an outlier. But the role of Mayor, there's a, there's a higher calling, and that is to develop consensus amongst your colleagues, to support the majority's decision once made, and work with any and all stakeholders to move the issue forward. So in that spirit, we will make sure that this is on our next council meeting agenda in December as an action item. It appears that there is consensus to move forward and support this revised purchase agreement. Again, we appreciate your patience and your cooperation during this process. The next council meeting definitely is December 5th, so we have the December 5th agenda beginning at 7:30. We'll make sure, Tony, are you able to attend that meeting? And maybe we can have a little bit more of a discussion about the possibilities for Lot 20? Excellent, okay? And in the meantime, if council members have questions, concerns, please direct those to our city manager. Okay? Would you care to make any additional comment at this time? We appreciate your attendance, again, and your flexibility at the 11th hour. Scott, thank you for your analysis on, analysis on this as well. At this time, the chair would entertain public comments. Under the open meeting, any citizen may come forward at this time, may have questions to the city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this issue? Then the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at, let's say, 7:30 on the dot. Moved by Yerba, seconded by Tahar. All those in favor of adjourning at this work meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. This meeting is adjourned.